We'll, um.
We be in tape?
Get the public hearing started. The Board of Appeals will hear an appeal for a special permit to reconstruct, extend or alter, change a non-conforming structure at thirty-seven Myrtle Street in Baldenville owned by Joseph Temple. Joe here?
Yes.
You wanna let us know what you wanna do, which plans are?
I bought a mobile home that's two foot wider and about seven foot longer. I wanna pull the mobile home out that's there and put this newer mobile home in. I can't get a trailer the same size that's there.
And you're not, you're not meeting the setbacks?
I'm not meeting the setbacks, right? It's only two foot wider.
It's.
And then here it says that the, right now, the, the current trailer sits thirty feet off the road?
Yes. The new one will still set thirty feet off the road. Just be two foot closer to the next door neighbor.
And what prevents you to keep it, keep it away from the neighbor?
The garage.
There's a, there's a garage attached to it, uh?
Sitting right next to it. It's only three inches difference between the garage and the trailer.
I did go by and looked, the garage looks like it's gonna fall down.
I'm gonna do some work on it.
I'm just thinking you could move the garage over if you're gonna rebuild it.
I went, uh, excuse me, I went down there to also too, and where those, where your propane tanks are, for the next neighbor, you're only gonna have probably, what, three, four feet between the propane tanks and the other guy's property? Like four, five feet.
I don't have any propane tank.
Yeah, there, there's a little shed there with the propane tanks underneath it.
That little shed thing has an oil barrel under it.
Well, same, well.
Okay.
Yeah, well, that's where I'm at. The fuel.
Okay, that little bump out, that little bump outs that's shown on the plan? About in the middle of the trailer?
Yeah.
Towards the east side of the property?
Right.
That's, that's real close, huh?
Yeah.
That little bump out, I can move to the back of the trailer. Garage looks like it's in good shape to me structurally. It's just cosmetic that has been changed.
So you, you don't wanna move the garage, that's?
I would prefer not to.
It wa- it would just make you, you a lot more conforming if you did, you know?
Cause you gotta.
I realize it.
I'm anxiety that garage.
What's that?
So with the, with the two foot that you have, that you're gonna add on, with, it's wider, obviously. So how much you looking for, how much between that trailer and the side of your property? As far as, to the edge of your property?
I think it's like seven, eight feet.
So you would need pretty close to a eight or ten foot variance for the side? Yeah, he, what he's got here is.
I'm talking here.
Yeah, he's got some, he's got a couple of different numbers here, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, well, he says about seven and eight, so I'm, I'm thinking, thinking at least ten foot. And that's without the bump. That's not counting the bump, he says he's gonna move that to the back. So with that bump, it's gonna be even less.
He's gonna move it, he said.
But currently, the, right here, it says, the current setback, side setback is seven and a half feet. That's, that, is that the bump out, or is that the, the trailer itself?
That's the trailer itself.
And how, the bump out is how far?
Two feet.
So where the bump out is, that would be where the trailer would be, the, the new proposed trailer would be?
Yes.
Would be sitting about where that bump out is?
Yes.
It doesn't look like much room there.
No.
No, you're gonna end up with a couple of feet only.
They'll give him to set a ladder on it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's only sixty, six, six feet.
No, to mention a fire, firefighter or something with a hose on their shoulder trying to get through.
Is, is a garage solid enough to move?
Solid enough to move, I don't know what I'd have to do to move a building, but, yeah.
Looks like there's more room on the other side.
That's, I'm just gonna go there, John, it looks like, uh, if you put it on the other side of the garage, would that, uh, give you more room and not, maybe not even have to have a side setback?
Maybe, I haven't measured.
Well, it's got sixty-six feet frontage.
On the other side.
How big's the garage?
Haven't measured it.
Okay, the trailer, the new trailer's gonna be how wide, ten feet?
Yeah, what, what's the existing trailer width?
Existing trailer is like twelve foot. I think it's like eleven foot.
So it'll give you fifty-four feet.
Eleven, ten wide.
And, and the measurements of the new trailer is thirteen? Fourteen, ten?
Yeah.
All right, fourteen even?
Fourteen even, yes.
So it's?
Two, a little over two foot.
Two foot, two inches.
Yeah.
Two foot, two inches bigger.
I don't believe there's a butter on the other side, right? So if you did put it.
There isn't on the other side, right?
If you put it on the other side, uh, rec- would there be a requirement for a setback where there's no other butter? I think it's the Army Corps of Engineers. Flood plane?
If you put it on the, the west side?
Left side.
Hmm.
It's the opposite.
Yeah, Ron, Ron was saying he thought that was, it dropped off into wetlands. Do you know if that, if that's a wet area, if it's considered a wetland, or?
I don't know how that's considered.
You haven't got a Conservation Commission on there?
No, I haven't.
Now, how close from this trailer to, is your neighbor? As far as from the property, on the other side of the property line, ain't quite a distance away, their house from the property line?
Can we see that?
Yes.
As far as, how, how far do you figure?
Picture David has.
Forty, fifty feet.
Okay. Just don't have it on here.
Oh, there's a house.
I had to tell with the trees there.
It's right there. He's right on, right on the line. Yeah, see, this is all like, nothing really, I'm not sure how far back he goes, but maybe he could fill it in, I don't know. Dave brought this, it's an overview.
Oh, is the trailer?
Yeah, that's the neighbor.
So what you're asking for tonight is to replace the trailer in the existing location?
Yes.
Two feet closer to the?
When you think about it though.
The next door neighbor, yes.
If you're in the east side, yeah, east boundary. Here's the boundary line.
I did talk to the next door neighbor. And they didn't have a problem with it.
I think it's too clo- I think it's too close.
What's the closest we've ever okayed?
Close one I ever did, I think, was that shed in Baldenville. But that was just, you know.
Five foot shed, no, no.
Yeah, that was, uh. What, what, what are the dimensions, fourteen by the proposed?
I think it's like sixty-seven foot.
You don't, you don't even know?
I'm not sure, I wrote it down.
If we write, if we write a variance, you know, we're gonna give you a permit for a sixty-seven foot trailer, or whatever speci- it's gonna be specific. If you say sixty-seven tonight, and all of a sudden sixty-eight, you gotta start all over again.
Sixty-six feet to the one.
Yeah, sixty-six foot, three inches.
Sixty-six, three?
Yeah.
Did you bring anything with you?
I didn't bring any paperwork, wouldn't.
Doesn't miss the width, huh?
He said seven and a half feet right now from there to the line.
What's, what's the width of the new one?
Twelve feet, he said, I didn't.
The one you're reading?
New one, fourteen foot.
Oh, fourteen feet.
Fourteen wide. And the one that's there now is how big?
It's.
Ten, uh, eleven, ten?
Eleven, ten.
Eleven, ten.
Less three feet wider.
That's two foot.
Four and a half feet.
Two, two, two foot, two inches. And you don't know the dimensions of the garage?
No, I don't.
John, if I can go grab a ruler, I can figure it out. Is that me going to grab my scale ruler?
I looked at it, I just drew, I just drew.
It's a mobile home, so it's got, it's got a flat roof on it?
No, there's a pitch to it.
The pitch to it, is there an overhang?
I think it's like three, three, four inch overhang. Maybe, maybe six inches.
All right.
You have to have that.
Yeah, they gotta add that to it. It's not from the foundation where you pull off of, it's the furthest piece out from the house. So if it be, uh, an overhang from the side.
Okay.
So it goes from that point to the sideline. So you'll lose the six inches or so.
Touch but, to the trailer?
That's it?
Can this garage be that close to the trailer?
I suppose, the one is there now, I think touches.
Yeah.
Garage is real close to the trailer.
I see it right here, yeah.
There's only
Inches?
Less than six inches.
Yeah.
But you do need, your, your roofs will be pitching. You can't dump water. You, you won't be able to keep them touching, right? I don't know what your roof lines are doing.
An inch or so. So it will drain down.
But if you had a six inch pitch, you would already touch the trailer.
I don't have anything else myself.
I know, yeah.
Looks like it's thirty-two long.
I'm just thinking he's gonna have to remeasure everything back. You see, this can't give a variance.
Looks like it's about thirty-two by twenty.
The width would be twenty feet then, right?
Hmm.
But it should be more room on the other side of it, then.
Yeah.
Where it is now.
Yeah, I don't know if we wanna continue this. Is, is there any other comments from? Anybody else?
Um, do, I'll ask, do, do you live in the trailer that's here now?
No.
Have you ever lived in the trailer?
I haven't.
Well, I, I work for the Templeton Water Department. The water line that goes underneath that trailer freezes every winter, so if you ever do anything, you gotta make sure that it won't freeze.
Okay.
Did you, did you got something to say? You, you live across the street, right?
No, I'm here, I own several houses around here, and I'm here just to listen for now because I'm gonna approach you with a problem in the near future.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
A problem that started twenty years ago.
Okay.
I would think mishaps.
I didn't do it.
Garage, move my fault.
Yes, I think we got two options. If, if, um, you know, I, I think before I grant it, we'd need more information, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Hard, you gotta come up with a hard plan that it's this wide, it's this, it's but I'm not here and not getting a warm fuzzy feeling with the other board members that even if we had those hard numbers, the, the whole, the concept isn't, isn't good, you know? It's too close already, you can replace it in the same footprint. You've got the right to do that. But, but you can't, you know, encroach more. So, so I don't know what the board.
And the thing is, I can't buy a trailer with the same footprint. They don't make them that small anymore.
Is there any way you can look at the garage yourself, take a good look and see if it braces them, if you could move it over?
I could look at that.
That would be the thought, then there'd be no problem. Then you can move the trailer over that to your.
I s- I see people moving them all the time, they brace them up real good inside, you jack it up, roll the trailer underneath it, flatbed trailer, pull it out, back it over, put it on another slab.
Okay.
I've seen them do that.
You'd have no problem.
Is it a real big garage?
Yeah.
Thirty by twenty.
Yeah.
So, what, two, two car, three, three car, yeah, all right, that'd be something to move.
Well, I was hoping I could get the variance and just put the new trailer in.
Now, on the, on your, uh, garage, where, where's your, uh, garage doors on this? Is it front, back, sides, uh, you don't have them, I, I mean, no, no one's got them.
One on the front.
You got one here?
Right over here.
All right, and, and nothing here? And nothing here?
Nope.
Okay. You don't know how much land you own from here to here?
I don't know for sure.
And this, is this wetland in back here?
Joe, there's no wetlands.
There's no wetland on this?
I just pulled it open on the Mass GIS mapping and there's.
Oh, okay. Just put a trailer on the other side. But you gotta give us some dimensions over here, how much footage? Can you, could you put the trailer here?
Yeah, yeah.
I could measure it, see if I could.
All right, cause you're gonna have to, like you say, we don't know exactly how much, even with the, uh, extra two foot, uh, was it, two foot, three inches? Well, two foot, two inches there. We don't, still don't know how much we got from the side to give it to you, like John said, we give you a ten foot, you needed twelve. You know?
If I did check in to measure, put me on the other side, do I have to come back here, pay another three hundred dollars?
No, no.
No.
We'll just.
We can continue this hearing.
We can continue this hearing. For you to produce some more information, and that would be getting an exact location, and the exact measurements, and, and, yeah, you know, you can, you can move it over to the other side of the property, that, you know, that might.
Okay, why don't we continue it and?
You would still need, you know, moving it, you, I think you could set it on the same location as this one, but you can't. You can't get one or whatever, so so if you're gonna move it, you need a special permit, that's what, that's what we're here for.
All right.
This, this, uh, document he gave us is from a registered survey. Was the land just recently surveyed, or is this what's in the books that he?
That's what's in the books.
So.
I think on this, though, is ten twenty-two eighteen. So that's the. When they certified it, that's when the mortgage company would certify, is that what that means?
Yeah.
Okay.
Keep it that way.
So Mal, do, when you get your scale, how much room does he have from the garage to the other property line?
To the left?
Yeah.
It was slide rule.
Got like twenty-five feet from the garage.
Twenty-five?
Hmm.
And I could do the math myself, but.
What is it on the other side?
Twenty-five on the
Left side.
West side.
Twenty-five foot?
It's like seventeen from the garage.
Seventeen on that, huh?
That's when I was done done, yeah. Well, isn't that within the?
Twenty-five.
Oh, that's not the floor now.
Twenty-five, that's in a three foot on the other side.
Seventeen.
Seven and a half feet on the other side.
You need a few inches.
Fourteen?
Like, really, to maintain a window or maintain a, you gotta get.
If you put it right there, fourteen foot line.
Wall of, put it right on, he don't really want, you know, about eleven foot there.
I'd put it.
Oh, they need a thirteen foot.
Nothing's gonna happen to a window if it's close to the garage.
Well, the water runs down in there.
You have a little space between them.
Like your, your garage, your wall of your garage?
Yeah.
Will rot, and
Yeah.
And how do you repair it?
You can't even maintain it or clean it or nothing.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, that garage is in the wrong spot.
You don't even have enough to turn the side with.
So with?
Sixty-seven, sixty-six.
What's the board wanna do, they wanna?
I think, I think we're gonna need some more information on, on measurements from the left side to the, to the boundary line and, and the right side to the boundary line. Something, because we, how can you really give them a number on a, on a variance for that?
Yeah.
How about if you move the garage back for that?
I'm thinking a, a variance this close, if he's going to put a bigger trailer there, being that close to a line that hasn't been surveyed for years and years and years, should have a solid marker with lines.
Yeah, so we really know.
Saying exactly where that line is.
Yeah.
If that line's two or three feet the other way.
Yeah.
We're putting the, the neighbor in jeopardy, we should have a document here showing a, a recent survey.
And even, you know, but when you're working that close to the, you know, you're working that close to the garage, you're working that close to your boundary line. I mean, you, you, you can't, you know? It was pre-existing non-conforming at seven and a half feet.
Yep.
I don't think that should get any smaller.
I don't either.
So, so if you wanna, we can vote on this as proposed tonight, or we can we could wait and have, we can, um, exten- um.
Continue?
Yes.
Continue the meeting, continue the meeting. To, uh, we'll pick a date tonight, and you can come back with some more information and see if you can move the garage, or split on the other side of the house, or, you know, we'll give you some options without starting another, another hearing over again.
I think we should have a survey, though.
And, and the, yep, to have, you know, we have a plan where you're gonna put the things and have it surveyed so that we know exactly, exactly what it's gonna be.
Yeah, ma- and there may be pins out there, uh, I, I don't know if you know your neighbor at all, that you're
I don't really.
You may wanna talk to them to find out, they may know exactly where the pins are, laid right out the, the lot line, so that would really save you some money. Excuse me?
They did point out one marker to me, it's back in the woods.
Okay, and, were in a front marker, I mean, you know?
I didn't see a front marker.
Okay. I know some people pound them down so they don't hit them with the lawnmower.
Yeah.
I'm one of them people. So I hit mine when I first moved in a few times, I says, this one's going right down. I can find where it is, and I can find it with a metal detector, but still. So it still may be there, that I would, that would be one avenue to go, so you, so you know, if you find one, at least they got something to work off of, you know?
All right.
So would you like to have the meeting continued?
Yeah, I'd like to have it continued.
All right, I guess we got a motion?
I'll make a motion, we can continue the meeting.
So what's?
Would, would be a good time, how much time would, did you need?
I can have the measurements and proposal on what I'd like to do in two weeks.
Well, it should be a survey, run a survey, though, so we know exactly.
Surveyors don't jump.
Yeah.
They don't know how to jump through hoops either.
Yeah, that's for sure.
I'd give it a month.
Oh, give it a month.
At least a month.
Believe it or not, it's a perfect time for surveyors.
Hate to set a date now.
Yeah.
If something comes up early, maybe you hear a whole mail, maybe we can do something.
Can we change it?
Okay.
Extension date?
Does that sound right?
I think we have to hold the meeting to vote on it, wouldn't we, for an extension date?
I'd be available for our regular fourth Tuesday, the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth, March twenty-sixth.
What, next Tuesday? No, no.
No, March.
Oh, March.
Give us a fourth Tuesday.
What's that?
I just had a comment.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
But, um, Brian Zock's pretty good.
Yes, Zock.
Yeah, he knows everything, he's been in the business a couple of generations, so he knows everything by heart. Their office is right, Gardner.
Okay.
And you could, you know, he could, he could locate the proposed building, how the proposed building would, would sit on the property, on, on his plan. I think that, that would be helpful to us.
Now, the garage is, the garage you say is in good shape, so you don't wanna knock it down?
I don't wanna knock it down, right. I realize they used the wrong plywood on the outside.
Wow.
Which
That has numbers, yeah.
If I put some vinyl siding on it, it would look a lot better. And it's sturdy.
Got a question?
Suggestion would be to Brian, a taped survey, not a full written, uh, survey, a taped survey is a whole lot cheaper.
All right, thank you.
He can come up and do that with Dave.
Yeah, he may already have the stuff right on.
And that, that's pretty much what this plan is.
Yeah.
The only thing.
Yeah.
This plan is a taped survey, so you really just need to place your proposed buildings on the plan and have it, and have it exact.
All right.
All right, we got a, we got a motion on the.
He's in a second.
Hold on a second, you got a second?
I'm on second.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
March twenty-sixth, you said?
March twenty-sixth, yeah.
That's Tuesday, you said, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and, just a suggestion, when you go to, go to figure out your sidelines and everything.
Yeah.
Just pull the tape and see what you got here, or what you got here, you know what I'm saying, different locations, just so, you know, and have, you may, you may find a place that it works a lot better too, so.
All right.
All right?
Yep.
Be my suggestion for that, then you have enough information when you come back in.
Okay.
You want to frame it?
Let's frame it, bring them along?
Yeah.
All right, second on the docket, all right?
It's out of ordering your packets.
We go to Kristoff Chadia.
I have to recuse myself.
Yeah.
Part of a meeting, if you don't mind.
All right, the board will consider a petition. Kristoff Chadia on South Road, map three eleven parcel thirty-eight point six, known as Blackberry Lane. This parcel currently has a hundred feet of frontage on South Road with a zoning requirement of a hundred and fifty. Applicant is requesting a variance in order to obtain building permit to erect a new single-family home on said parcel. Is that here in the audience?
Yes. Jeff, this, this piece of property, you probably recall, had been planned to be a development in the nineties or something. Guy put in the subdivision and had a plan for six or eight, I think eight houses in there with a road. But then when the market dropped out, or the bottom dropped out of the market, no longer paid, made sense to build only eight houses, to put a road in for just eight houses cause it's kinda rocky and there's wet spots back there and stuff. So he sat on it for a long time, and then I made him an offer a few years ago and bought the land. So he sat on it for a long time, and then I made him an offer a few years ago and bought the land. But when the planning board did the subdivision with him, what they're supposed to do is leave the hu- leave the proper amount of frontage. Attached to the roadway until the subdivision is built in case this happens. But they failed to do it because they felt people were building houses so quick back then, they felt for sure that it was gonna go through. So it kinda puts forty-five acres, I think it's forty-three now, you know, land, landlocked without a, an ability for somebody to put a buildable lot on. So it was originally gonna be a road and six or eight hous- eight houses. And my proposal is to make it a useful piece of land again and just, like to have a variance on the frontage to build that one house.
Do you have something to show us too? You don't, do you put, can you put?
Right in front of you, um, in the folder to the right of John is the building plan with all the plot plan proposed house.
According to the plan here, you have, it's a hundred feet of frontage, but it's pretty much a radius.
Yeah.
Just the radius, so it's pretty much fifty feet of frontage with a, with a radius, plus the radius, gives you another twenty-five feet on each side.
Yep, because when in it goes, there's a little strip that goes through the houses. It's, used to be a field and they put the easy houses in the field. So that strip is an access way that goes through, cause it was supposed to be a road. And then that land opens up behind everything.
So there's.
Last page in that room.
So the Blackberry Lane was an approved subdivision?
Correct.
It was approved by the planning board?
Correct.
But never constructed?
Correct, so they got kinda caught with their pants down. I'm on the planning board, but. Um, but because they're, like, what we're supposed to do is allow for, you know, the correct frontage if the project doesn't go through. That's the correct frontage for a road, but it's not the correct frontage for.
Where's he put now? I don't know.
The zoning area, RA two. Don't wanna show you?
Yeah, you're gonna.
Yeah, we're kinda lost on this.
Cause it looks like something's here and then something's here. There's two things there.
I think this is similar to the one we just granted up on Gray Road. I think you only add five feet of frontage, so an eight acre lotto back or a five point area.
Okay, thi- thi- this is, this is part of the old subdivision thing. I've re- I've redone it with the win in the ta- tax office, so it's all one parcel now. So it's no longer in eight or ten parcels like it was. So that's just leftover, but South Road goes by here, the water, water tower's right over here.
Yeah.
And I'm proposing a driveway that comes in here and then goes all the way across here. So this thing is a long ass way from, excuse me, it is a long way from the guys, the neighbors in the field. And I'm doing that deliberately so that it's not, you know, so it's comfortable, comfortable for everybody, exactly. But this, this is gonna be like a fifteen, hundred foot driveway to achieve that.
So you're only putting one house lot in there?
Correct, and the rest of it, I bought it for agricultural purposes, but it makes sense to have one building on the, on that big section of something to, to do something with. And also gets me power out there if I, you know, do a barn or something in the future.
It's a long way for power. You're gonna, what are you gonna do for water?
A well.
Okay.
I think it makes more sense.
Yeah, it's a long way to do water.
Yeah.
I went, I met Tom with the electrical company and he's gonna let my guys lay the, you know, help lay the pipe and stuff and. So it's not ideal, but he'll put a, like a, one of those transfer blocks out here, cause they still wanna underground the whole way, so he would put a pole over here. So I, I've, I've talked to most of the neighbors.
You're gonna make sure, you're gonna, this is just gonna be a driveway and there'll never be any houses out there?
No, no, thi- thi- this is, this is the back of the field, kinda, kinda like this.
I know where it is, yeah.
And it's been gone to.
Cause it wa- it was Olson that did this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I walked it with him when he had it, so I know.
And that field is still good lawnmower, it's still, I mean, it's probably three and a half acres that's just been getting overgrown over the last few years, so.
Where's the fields, over here?
It's.
Is that what this is?
This is kinda.
No, he said that was supposed to be a lot for the subdivision.
It's over here.
Yeah, they just disregarded that, John.
Disregard this.
There's four houses here, and behind their house, they have their yards, and then there's kind of a lot of this is, I don't know how to exactly show on here, but a lot of this is a field. Like a three acre field or four acres, I couldn't be sure, but it's all overgrown and weeds and everything, so I'm gonna plant, you know, have them till that under and put good hay in it. And then, so all these folks are happy about that, so they're not looking at an eyesore. And then in the, in the winter or fall, you wouldn't even be able to see from, I mean, in, in the summer rather, you wouldn't even be able to see, you know, these, this house in your backyard.
Most enthusiastic about it.
How mu- how much is this right here?
Fifty foot.
Plus it's a hundred.
No, he needs a.
So the, the variance is, is saying your frontage.
Is a hundred.
Is Blackberry Lane, but.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, the piece of land is on Blackberry Lane, but, but that's not really accurate. That, Blackberry Lane's never, doesn't exist, never will, never.
Never will, never.
So your frontage would be this hundred foot, right, on South Road?
Yeah. And he needs a hundred.
He can split it here though.
Problem is the finances, the money doesn't work.
Yeah, and you're gonna start all over.
On a road, and money doesn't work, and that's not why I bought the land. I bought the land to primarily do agricultural things with it, but. Have all that land and not have one building on it seems like a waste. Of resources.
Are you gonna live there?
I don't know. I, not, not at first. At first, there's gonna be a friend of mine who lives there.
I know you got a pretty nice place where you are now.
Yeah, I have a, I have a friend that works with me, it's a ex-marine guy and, and, uh, I'm, I'm gonna put him there to start.
He's gonna rent, you, be a rental essentially? Yeah.
Yep, to a known entity though. He's doing the, he's doing some farming stuff, didn't he?
So it's a small house, twenty-five by twenty-five?
It's essentially a two-car garage, with an apartment above it.
This is it, this is the plan, see?
But the theory would be, you know, if it was ever.
That's it?
If, if, he's a single guy right now, and, and I don't know if he'll stay there forever, but the theory would be get something and he could always add, add to it later. And make it a bigger, you know, cause that would, that's essentially a two-car garage, you could add like a house to it later.
Do you have over five and a half feet of setback?
Yes.
Plenty of setback, that's for sure.
Yeah, that's just like that guy here, like. He was, he was saying, we, he, he didn't have the frontage well and he had it out in the back, remember last year?
What's that?
The one we did last year.
Amistadi.
It's Amistadi, remember we?
Uh-uh. On Gray Road, yeah.
He didn't have the frontage on Gray, but he had it out in, out in the back.
Yeah, it's very similar.
That's what.
Same, I think, yeah.
Same deal, really. Except these got more, I think Amistadi at seventy-five feet, Kristoff's got a hundred.
Yeah.
Plus ten times the land.
Yeah.
I believe it was five acres on Gray Road, in the back there.
Yeah. This is forty-three acres?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot of land.
It was, it was originally, when I bought, I think it might have been fifty or forty-eight or something, but the person right here. Wanted to buy a little piece of it to, as a buffer, you know, for a little bit more space for him, so I sold a little piece of it to him.
Maybe you can swap a little on the front.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, you know, this guy next door, they have a lot of land right here?
No.
Oh, he doesn't have a lot, okay, I didn't know how big this, I don't know if it was another.
These are all just RA two, two acre lots that got.
Alright, so he can't really, can't steal fifty feet.
This one over here is so.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's that one and then the, the next one is.
Would you have any problem with the, with the stipulation of no, no further develop, no further, um, subdivision of the property? That it re- remains a forty-three acre house lot?
Good question. I hadn't thought about that.
Not a garage lot, no, a house lot. So if you wanted to put an extra barn on, say.
Yeah.
We're not talking a barn, we're talking a, another house.
Oh, but, but what if I wanted to parcel out twenty acres to sell to John Brooks in the back?
No, you couldn't then, cause you don't have.
Well.
You, tha- there's where your road frontage comes in.
You know, your road front.
Your driveway.
I don't mean to, I don't mean to put a house on it.
Yeah.
It cuts down the.
You can't sell your frontage.
Right, obviously.
Um. You wouldn't wanna.
I mean, John Brooks wouldn't take that way, if I gave it to him, I don't think, but.
But, yeah, but.
But the point is, why would I wanna put a restriction of selling, what, what?
Well, you're proposing right now of putting a house with a hundred feet of frontage on forty-three acres of land.
Yep.
And then now.
Now you propose.
Now you're gonna, oh, well, jeez, I might wanna sell twenty acres someday.
Then you can't use it for a right of way if it's done with just the house.
And, yeah, you know, that's, you're proposing, we're, we're looking at, oh, you got forty-three acres of land, put one house on it, hundred feet of frontage? Yeah, yeah, no problem. But then with the stipulation, you can't further subdivide it, you know, cause tha- that's what you're proposing to us. You, we can give you a variance and then all of a sudden you go sell forty-one acres of land out there, or forty-two acres of land or whatever, you know, that's.
Well, what amount of land would make you feel, I mean, couldn't it, wha- what, what amount of?
Just have to put the road in.
It's, it's, it's the road width is what the problem is.
And you gotta, you gotta keep that frontage with the house, so.
But would it?
You would have to sell it to a butter, cause you have no frontage.
That's my point, that's for John Brooks and butter, so.
But you don't wanna sell.
Too much.
Forty acres of it, you know?
But, but, but could we just put a restriction on, yeah, at least ten acres need to remain with the house, or whatever you're comfortable with?
Yeah.
I mean, it, there's a very, very slim chance that I'm gonna want to sell or any of the butters would want to buy, nor would anyone wanna buy a landlocked piece, but. I'd rather, whatever amount you wanna keep with the house to feel comfortable, just put that in there. So, you know, would that be a consideration of, okay, well, yet I keep at least ten acres?
Well, if, if you're gonna put another house, you'd have to put the road in.
I'm not saying, there's no way another house can go on it. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not suggesting another house, I'm just saying if you ever wanted to just sell the land as land. There'd be no way to put another, once this one house goes, yeah, I, that, that's the, tha- that's the idea, that you can't, you can't ever put another house in.
And it.
The question would come in too about a right of way.
Yeah.
About the way you're getting to a piece that you sell that's landlocked, unless you sell the two and a butter.
That's all I'm saying.
If you sell it to a butter, then.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say that'd be a problem.
Yeah.
Well, you do a sub, you know, you're on the plan, but you do a subdivision plan and, and you can't create a landlocked piece of land.
Yeah.
You know? And if you do it's to be, to be deeded to a butter, that's, that's how you do it.
Yeah.
But, but you do, you wouldn't wanna give up your front, you know, you can't give up your frontage.
Right, you got to, I'm saying, say whatever minimum has to stay with the house and the frontage, cause there's other reasons to subdivide land too. If you're passing land down to generations.
But see, when you, you gotta have access to it. So where.
How they gonna get to it?
If you, if you're passing it to the next generation, you can't give ten acres to one kid and ten acres to another kid with only, with only access at one spot.
Cause if it gets sold, if that frontage gets sold.
No, you give it.
Now they can't get to it.
But you give it to the same, it's, it's more like if you're, if you're doing, you give it to the same person over time. So it's, it's for, it's for, it's for death taxes, it avoids death taxes if you, I mean, that's just another example of a possible reason why on paper I might want more than one parcel. There's also banking reasons why on paper you might want more than one parcel. I, I, I'm just saying, if we don't, if we don't have to.
But legally, but legally, we can't give you that.
Yeah.
Giving what?
More than one parcel.
But, right, but, but do you have to say, does the restriction have to be one house on forty-three acres, or could it just be one house on five acres? Or ten acres? Leaving the possibility of not tie, not tying the rest of the land necessarily.
So you're talking about, it's, okay, here's your driveway here. We'll say this is five acres, we'll just go right up to here. So you put the house here.
Yeah.
Alright, how you still gonna get back here? There's your driveway. As far as the rest of this, if you were to sell it off.
Well, this, this goes way back here too, it's forty-three acres back here.
I would really only.
Well, you'd have to have this come up and cut over this way, cause if you go up this way, it's cut through and shattered.
I think are, are very few. I just think if there's a restriction on it of a whole forty-three, then the scenarios become just one scenario. The, the only scenario is one house on forty-three acres.
Yeah, that would be the cleanest.
Yep.
Way of wording is, is. You get a variance, or, yeah, variance for the forty-three acres in one house.
Otherwise, the appeal process may kick you in the butt.
Appeal process?
Yeah, if anybody can appeal this, then we'd have to start over. Any decision we make is, got the, anybody in the public has twenty days to appeal it.
Why, why would that? You, you think that someone might care, care more about?
By, by you wording it clean.
Yeah.
Like he means, it's gonna not have an appeal issue. If somebody sees it as being split, hey, he owns a forty-three acre lot, he's only using five, so how does that work? Boom, I appeal it. You'll be back here and doing it to the, the forty-three acre one house.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't really know of a good way of. Protecting it. You know, you're proposing a hundred feet of frontage, one house lot. And then.
Well, if we do, if we do it as one house lot, say, and, and then down the road, say, Joe Schmoller's right here. He decides, I'm gonna buy, I wanna buy this back piece here.
Yeah.
And he's got, because now he's got the, it's two acres or whatever in front, he's got enough road frontage, obviously. Um, what would he have to do to, to say, okay, now I wanna sell these off? He'd have to go what, to the, to the planning board again?
Yeah.
So that would have nothing to do with us again. If we just kick this, what I'm saying is, we just kick this for one. And then down the road, if, if someone does wanna buy it, they, he can bring it back, right? He can bring it back to the, to the board.
Yeah, you can amend it.
He can amend it, so. So we could actually just write it up as a one-house lot if we wanted to, and then just down the road, he can amend it down the road. And do, and that way it's a clear cut break for us, that it's one lot, and then if he wants to split it down the road, he's gonna, well, obviously gonna have to have another way in. So I think that may not be a bad way to do that.
Okay.
What have we done in the past?
Yeah, that sounds great. Yeah, I just wanted, I, I think it's.
Minimum.
That way you, it, well, it clears the whole thing up, cut and dry.
Yeah.
Could he give us with two, a fifty and a fifty, the one fifty being a right of way down the road and the other fifty big enough?
Well, you don't have, you only got a hundred feet with a radius, so you really only have fifty feet of frontage.
Yeah.
You know, you've got a radius that, but you only got fifty feet of land.
Oh, it gets skinny after a while.
Ten feet, ten feet off the road, your lot's down to fifty feet already.
I, I appreciate that, Mr. Smart, but I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it being one. I ju- I'm just, there's just like a, there's like a three percent chance in ten years, you know, somebody next door wants five acres. I just don't wanna not be able to do that.
Yeah.
For example, that, even since I owned it, you know, I had forty-eight and somebody wanted three acres just to have a little.
Right.
And that was, it worked out, it didn't change the use of what I'm doing.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Where, where did that piece come out of this?
Uh, this is only not the whole piece, so I'm kind of, it's not looking quite right to me.
Do you need this one here? That make it better?
A little bit better, I think.
This South Road is the driveway.
Back here more?
Yeah, it was, it was like right here, yeah. It was just in the backyard of this.
But it didn't come all the way down to the road?
No, it's just a little.
Okay, just a little, yeah.
Yeah.
And it went to this Longley?
Yeah, I can see that.
Went to this neighbor here, Stephen L. in Longley.
Yeah.
I think that'd be the, maybe the easiest, cleanest way, one lot, and then, like you say, down the road, it's three percent and, you know, one house lot. I mean, it's about, like I say, as far as a barn and stuff like that, I mean, you know, nothing we've, we've done now.
There's a couple places in town this happened. I know up on Caruth Road, there's one house lot that's got twenty-five, thirty acres, just like this in the back. And off of, what's it, Old North, that goes to the right, that's the same way.
Okay.
Guy bought all the land, but only put the frontage homes in, and then the land that's in the back, built the home all the way out in the back. Guy bought all the land, but only put the frontage homes in, and then the land that's in the back, built the home all the way out in the back. Cause some people want the privacy and wanted all the land.
Right.
Oh, yeah, I put it right, man, Caruth Road to the right, yeah.
All right, any other questions from the board? Almost, right?
Almost, though.
Anybody in the audience have a comment?
No more, and just four, that's all, I'm gonna keep quiet.
So if it was written up as a one-house lot, you wouldn't have a problem with that?
Talking to me?
Yeah.
No, I, no, that makes sense, I just wanted to flush it out to understand.
All right, yeah, no, that's good, that's, it's, it's the feedback, that's good, all right.
No, that's totally, that's great, fantastic, thank you.
I got no, uh, I got no more questions.
All right. Got motion to close?
I'll move the phones.
I'll second it.
Session.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Couple can't close, seven to ninety. All right. Very good.
What'd you do to your arm?
Wrote a cup.
Oh, so it was planned, it wasn't an accident?
No.
Don't fly yet. You've gotta, gotta give him the spiel. So he knows about the twenty-one days and?
Yeah, Mallory, you wanna?
Yeah, so what they'll do is they'll vote, I'll type up the decision, um, as long as we vote today, I'll probably have it to the town clerk stamped tomorrow. Um, that opens your appeal period for twenty days, when you want to come to appeal it, if someone appeals it, you'll get notified. Um, after the twenty days has passed, they'll certify that no one's come forward to appeal, you'll get a copy of that, and you just need to file that registry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then, um, and then it goes back to the building department, you have to reapply it, or is it?
Once the twenty, no, you don't have to reapply to us, once the twenty days is, I don't think he had any problems with the plans, it was just waiting for his parents. So once those twenty days have, um, left, no one comes forward, yep.
Well, I don't know, well, if they're not here, they're not here.
Yeah, you're welcome, take care. So.
Just six thirty.
Yeah, I just do it as soon thereafter, so we don't have to wait for appointment times, um.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep, you have a good day.
It doesn't look like the applicant's here.
No.
No.
Is anyone here for the USA Auto Recycling?
Who's here to find out about it and perhaps say something, but by variance.
Your neighbor, right?
Well, you can still say something.
So, there's nothing being discussed, uh?
Yeah, I don't know, they don't show up.
They do.
I don't, I don't know, if they don't show up, we have what they supplied, I know that right now, they have a class three license, they do junk and parts, they're looking to sell used automobiles. Um, so they went forward to the selectmen first, which generated the letter from Richard saying that it'd be a change of use. Um, they did provide a map, um, but they also provided me an incomplete application and never signed for their green card or responded. Um, and I asked them to come back and sign their application.
So they never did sign the application?
No, so I tossed them on to night's agenda, hoping that they would come sign it and be good.
Okay, so.
But, and then, yeah, I've reached out multiple times and.
So they'd actually never signed the application?
Nope.
Kinda ends that then, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah, yep. I was out the day that they returned it, I wasn't in the office, so, so.
There was messages left for him?
Messages left, I've sent certified mailings, I have the receipts, but I haven't gotten a green card back.
So we can't have it here?
They have it here, no.
Okay.
He still hasn't.
Yeah.
The butter I was notifying, and if this does come up again, will I be notified?
Absolutely, anything that happens with on this piece of property, um, any butter within two hundred feet would be notified via mail.
Yeah, this meeting isn't being continued.
No.
It's never being, it's never was opened.
Yeah.
So.
I just didn't know if.
Yeah, you would definitely.
No.
Is there gonna be a meeting?
It'll be advertised, you'll get notices again, it'll be right from scratch again.
Absolutely.
Was your input to be positive or negative? Just curious.
Um, I was willing to listen to what was being proposed before I was gonna make that decision.
Oh, okay, yeah, I was just curious.
Likely, it would be negative, it's a residential area and I think it should stay a residential area.
I live down at South Main, I know what you're talking about.
They already have a variance and there's another salvage yard there, and the purpose of zoning is to keep residential areas residential and keep the commercial areas in other places.
Okay, very good.
All right, then.
Take care.
Thanks for coming.
Did you get everything you wanted and know?
I just wanted to see what your process and everything was, I, I've got a piece of property that, uh, my wife, when I was in the Middle East, I've been in the Middle East fifteen years. On anti-terrorism stuff, and she was denied a building permit, she was denied. Uh, problem with the planning board and she claimed she came to the zoning board of appeals. It's a three-acre lot with a hundred and twenty feet of frontage, had a house on it from the seventeen hundreds that burned down. And I am being denied the process to rebuild, because my lawyer filed three separate times while I was away. And kept each one of the deeds as one lot, instead of, cause I built a new house for my in-laws on half of it. And it's a nine-acre lot on the Otter River, and this has three acres, and we haven't been able to build a house there for, since nineteen seventy-eight. Has town water, town sewer, and a foundation.
Where are you, where is that?
Right there in Otter River by, uh, uh, Hamilton Mill Road. All of my neighbors have fifty-foot of frontage, every one of them. Going up to the store and everything, I have a hundred and twenty feet, and I was told that I have to give a hundred and fifty feet, which would put. The frontage for that one in the driveway of the new house. The next lot, which would go over to the little house, the land would go beyond the house. And then the third house would have frontage into the fourth lot.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
You've brought it to the board of appeals before?
My wife did, while I was in Egypt.
How long ago was this?
Uh, nineteen eighty-four.
That's a little before me, I always thought, we weren't too much farther after that, but we, we, we go back a little bit, George, but not that far.
Biggest problem on the whole thing was Frank Machete. That was the biggest problem, because he and I had it out over a water line, and a number of issues, anyway.
What side of the river are you on when you go down Hamilton Mill?
On the right, so, I'm on the state road.
Okay.
And I own from the bridge down to the guy that just bought out the, uh, house that went up auction. The guy that's putting his goddamn garden and everything on my land.
Oh, seventy-two? Seventy-two Main Street?
Yeah, two ninety-three.
Oh, two ninety-three.
Two ninety-three and two eighty-nine.
Okay.
State road, the state road, right?
Yeah, on the state road, right, Route sixty-eight, yeah, well, we were skiing, we're up in Northern Vermont, the house burned down. We put in our new heating system and the furnace just kept running.
Yeah, that was in what, seventies or?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven.
And I haven't been building a new house there since.
You're, you're gonna put it on the same foundation?
I built a new foundation, the foundation was there, was stone foundation, seventy-six feet long, four foundations.
Well, I understand, I got an old house and I got a stone foundation too.
Tore all that down, I tore it.
Did you put it right in the same spot where you tore the old one out?
I moved it back to the thirty feet of frontage.
Yeah, but if it was done in the seventies, that was before we had zoning.
But the thing is, if he stayed in the same blueprint, he, he could, they couldn't shut him down?
Yeah, but we didn't have those rules then.
With no rules then, oh, that's true too.
It was willy-nilly what they wanted is.
Okay, we, we won't go there, yeah, that's why he's saying Frank. Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying.
Not kidding, huh?
So when you're ready to move forward with the process, the first step is going to be to come take a visit to the building commissioner, so he can generate a letter for you, um, to get you here.
I've got two or three of those.
All right.
Well, I'd need, I'd need a fresh one though.
Yeah, we need a fresh one, so our, our new letters expire in thirty days.
Cause the, the zoning has changed.
Big time.
So get a current one.
Yeah.
Get a current denial.
It's all surveyed and been resurveyed and everything, in fact, the sewer line is on our property and it's not supposed to be, I don't care. You know, it was supposed to have been on the other people's property.
Oh, sure, you're right where they put the trailer where the truck went through the house.
On the other side, they extended, they dropped the sewer line.
Closer to Dana.
I own those, uh, three houses, I started the, down at the bridge, you know where the sewer pump station is?
Oh, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
I own that driveway where the sewer pump station is. I own that drive, all the way down to the dam.
Wow.
And, uh, on there, and, uh, starting from the dam, all the way up to behind where Fred Levinsky and all them live. In the other house, I own, on eighteen hundred feet of river frontage.
Holy Jesus.
So, right there, it's a nice wetland.
And you lived, you lived up on Jacob Flatter, right?
Uh, that's where I'm, uh, technically I don't, my legal address is still two ninety-three, so I can have my business and everything.
Oh, okay.
But I'm building a log cabin up there, have you seen it?
No, I was up there years ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Years ago.
You can't see it from any road, but we can see the stone tower, Quabon Dam.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Five miles away.
No kidding.
Look down on all of the Tully Lake and everything.
Yeah.
We have baiters and everything, in fact, I've got pet porcupines that are sitting on a lap eating bread.
Yeah.
Well, they don't mind, and, uh, it's quite a place, I got that cheap, cause nobody could get a perk test.
Yeah.
Up there, it's all solid ledge, but we knew three places, I do that for a living, I knew three places I could dig fourteen, fifteen feet deep.
Wow.
So I got that whole mountaintop for twenty grand.
Wow.
Wow.
And, uh, we put up a homeland security radio tower up there, so they can communicate from Boston to North Adams and. The air bases down out of Springfield, and they pushed it when the state police had that call. Up at Bears Den with the motorcycle gang fighting, so state troopers go running up there, the motorcycle guy started kicking the shit out of them. So they couldn't get anybody on the two-way radio, they had to run down to the railroad tracks, and they were lucky, guy was coming with a four-wheel.
No kidding.
They said, all right, we need the radio tower quick. So it's for state police, fire police, I don't think Tupperton's using it, but all the others are, Roy Austin, Warwick, Wendell. No, but I wanted to see how the process, so I feel a lot better now that.
Oh, we're very reasonable, we, we hate to not give a variance.
Well, you know.
That's the first one we've denied, I think, since, well, we haven't denied it, but.
Yeah.
First one that, that comes close to being denied, let's put it that way.
You know, I felt bad, there was a house there, I loved it, we had just rebuilt that house, everything in it, except the kitchen. The kitchen cabinets were in there and the buggy barn, the kitchen cabinets were in there and everything, we put all the windows in it, doors, heating system and everything. And I lost my ass, because I had twenty thousand dollars worth of insurance on it.
Huh.
And it cost me twenty-five grand to get it torn down.
Yeah.
And that didn't include the furniture in it, antique furniture, so.
Yeah, it has to.
Yeah.
But there's a water line and a sewer line to that foundation now, I'm paying for every year.
He appreciates it.
You don't pay anything for, for water, though?
No, because we're not using it, but the line is here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We pay a sewer better than.
Yeah, sewer does it better than water does, yeah.
Right, and at least it's here, my son worked for the sewer department. From Spock.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, I know where you are now.
He's living in the little house.
I plowed his driveway once in a while for him.
It helps.
He works a lot of hours, that kid.
Yeah, I know.
Always been a kid no more.
It was unfortunate, and his duty here, he's accepted at Harvard and Yale, and because I sold my big farm to the price president of Harvard.